Okay, so let's get to the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. So, everyone's here. Glenn and Jamie are absent with notice. Our next item is the minutes from the November 5th meeting. We have an amended, slightly amended draft copy.
Part that changed is on page two, Part B, the financial report. Just the wording needed a little clarity, so it's updated.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
I should say has amended.
Has amended, right. All right. Okay, and then also in our packet is the School Board Budget Work Session Minutes from November 8th. If everyone got a chance to look at those.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I hope that we accept the minutes as.
All right.
I'll second them.
Thank you.
I'm gonna read them.
All in favor? Three, zero. All right, Privilege of the Floor? Nothing. No communications. No communications. All right, Administrative Reports.
Thank you. We have in your packet an enrollment report. I have one change on that. We are actually at 163. We have one less student in third grade, so third grade should say 27. And then we would be at 162. For the Principal's Report. Just a few important dates coming up. To let you guys know that today Betty Bellier and Ellen Young came in and they did wreath making with Team Respect and the Ashland Garden Club. And it was, as always, a delightful event with a lot of sticky hands, but the school smelled great. I mean, that pine smell was awesome, and a bunch of them got delivered by teachers after school today, so they looked great. And that's a thank you that we do to the businesses that participate in the Halloween parade, so we give them wreaths every year. And that's kind of, so it's a really awesome thing, and they have a lot of fun doing it. And it's great to see Mrs. Bellier and Mrs. Young come back and help out with that. They're funny, and they have a lot of energy, so they love to come back and do these cool things. On the 5th, we do have the Holiday Dinner. We sent home kind of a signup sheet for that, just so that we could be well-prepared and plan for that. So, our first lunch starts at 11:05, and you're more than welcome, and we'd love to have you come. I know, Mr. Heath, you're gonna be a guest server, right?
Mm-hmm.
Sandra, I'd love to have you be a guest server. I've got little reindeer horns you could wear, and...
Wait a minute.
Oh, you wanted the reindeer horns, or...
No, no, no.
I have an elf hat for you.
See, I don't want to hear, I'm all set. You're a center.
Or you can just come and have lunch. It's a lovely event, so...
Shannon, Thursday is my day away, but it's also the Christmas open house that I'm having. And all the surrounding towns are invited, and I think we're...
Well, what time is that, so I can go?
Two to four.
Okay, I'll see you there.
You don't know where it is.
I don't.
No.
Winter prep preparations are well underway. We have 49 skiers, snowboarders, 88 skaters, six students on campus. We have our boot fitting coming up on the 10th. Middle School is going to the Boston Museum of Science for a field trip. We have ugly sweater day on the 20th, so that's a really fun day. And then early dismissal for the holidays. Our Staff of the Month, Joanne Bickford and Ms. Kiki Abdul-Jabbar. Jo Bickford, as always, puts on a fantastic book fair and does a lot of work. As you can see, it's all packed up and waiting for Scholastic to come back and pick it up, but very successful. She does a ton of work to prepare for that. Also is kind of key to our I Love to Read and Write Week and our book buddies, our monthly book buddies that we do. So, Jo works really hard, and I'm very thankful for her. And Ms. Abdul-Jabbar, as always, her flexibility in being able to jump in wherever we need her without even hesitation and a smile on her face always. She is fantastic and helps things just stay consistent here when we do need substitutes, when we do need someone else in the classroom. So she is wonderful. I want to thank Sandy Elaine and the Ashland Women's Club once again. They sent us a donation check for $50 for our Project Week. They do that to honor an Education Week. Every year, she calls and asks me what they can do, and I say, "Whatever you want." Like, we're so grateful, so we got a great card from them just the other day. So, thank you to the Ashland Women's Club and Sandy Elaine, who is the Chair of, I think, the Education Committee of that club. Our Attendance Challenge for Trimester One, the goal was for students to have four or fewer absences, and we had 88% of our kids meet that goal, which is awesome. So we're really excited about that. And that's it.
All right, thank you. Next is the Financial Report.
So I have been well-educated on the financial report. And as you can see, if you turn to... Go to the bottom, page 17. Although it reflects a negative balance, we are, we have about $58,000 that is due to the general fund from two grants, Title I and IDA. IDA is the Special Education Funds that we receive as a grant. That should bring our balance up to about $45,000. Some factors that are impacting the budget are two unbudgeted long-term substitutes that we have needed this year, as well as the main building heating system, increased special education needs complicated by a reduction in the IDA funds. We've talked about that, particularly in the area of speech and homeless transportation. Budget will continue to be monitored. We are, you know, looking very closely for other efficiencies. And again, I want to stress that, you know, Dr. Bartlett and the staff here do an amazing job, very, very conservative and very thoughtful and mindful. You know, these certainly are costs that are outside of our control that are impacting us. And, you know, we may need to consider, you know, the board considering later on whether or not we need to withdraw from the Special Education Trust or potentially the Facilities Trust. But we, you know, have some time before that decision needs to be made. There's also a General Fund Revenue Report that's included in your packet, and that begins on the next page. So, an adjustment that has been made is kindergarten was changed, and that money was funneled into adequacy aid, which was beneficial for the Ashland School District. So the state adequacy aid for Ashland increased by $102,438. The kindergarten aid that was lost was $26,350, so you can certainly see that that shift was very beneficial. And so the net gain was $76,088 compared to last year. You know, one of the things that we are being cautious of is there are changes to the Medicaid rules. So those are things in terms of us being able to get compen, you know, reimbursed for. So we are watching that very closely. Mrs. Dodge is working to ensure that we're able to, you know, make sure that we're getting, being as compliant as we can, so that we can get as great a return on those requests down the road. So, just to be aware, though, that that is something that every school district right now is certainly challenged with, with those new regulations. So, any questions for the financials? Thank you.
And the Facilities update?
Sure, I just have a few things to update you on. We are, our response to our playground inspection that was done earlier in the year, there were things that we needed to address, and we have done that and sent back the report to Primex. We are in search of some quotes for a new cafeteria freezer to replace the one that we have, as we've had some issues with that. I think the issues are resolved now, but the freezer itself that we have is 30 years old. So we're just checking into what our options are for replacement. We are still gathering quotes for our potential gym boiler and plumbing plan for replacing those things. And we are in the process of ordering our Tecmar Boiler Alert System, which is for our main building boilers, to make sure that if anything doesn't work that's supposed to work, or something happens, that we get an instant alert right from the system on that. Over break, we have a few projects on the list. The gym windows, the new gym windows, the trim will be painted, the locks will be installed on those windows by Granite State Glass. We have a few more pieces on the cafeteria, a sound and projection system to install that we're waiting for the electrician to do. So those are on the list for the holiday break that's coming up. And that's it?
Yeah. All right, that's a lot. All right, next is the Business Superintendent, General Operating Expenses.
Are there any questions that I can answer?
I'll entertain a motion to approve the Payment of Bills Manifest 2009.
Some will.
I'll second them.
All in favor? All right, Policy. We have the second reading of Policy DJB Purchasing Procedure. That's it. Attachment six.
I will say that I didn't have my packet before, so I'm reading it as we go along. So, all right. But I have read this while you guys were talking. So I'll make a motion.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Thank you. And then we have the first reading of a few policies. The first one is Policy DN, Disposition of Books, Supplies, and Equipment, Attachment Seven.
So I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Three, zero, thank you. Policy EBBC, Emergency Care and First Aid.
I haven't read this.
Okay.
Is this the one that we read earlier, and it was...
Yes, so the addition of potentially life-threatening is added.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. All right, second, Steve. All in favor?
Well, for...
Oh, I'm sorry.
For discussion. It references two policies that I'm not familiar with, so even though it is the first reading, you know, do we have those policies that I would be able to see?
Abs, I don't know, do we have them easily available this evening?
None.
But we can certainly...
For the next reading?
Yep, we can make sure that they get attached for the next reading.
Because this is only the first reading, okay.
I think, you know, we'll try to do that in the future. I think it's just helpful to have it when you're going through the process.
All right. So for the first reading, are we ready to... All in favor? Three, zero. All right, thank you. Policy GBCD, Background Investigation and Criminal Records Check. And I'll entertain a motion to...
Some will.
I haven't read it, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Take your time.
Oh, that'd be great. Do you mind doing that?
No, no, not at all.
I'll make a motion to accept it for discussion, yeah.
Okay.
My motion wasn't seconded.
Oh. I think Steve made the first one.
Oh, he didn't?
Yeah, okay. And so are we ready to vote on that?
Well...
Or you want to read it?
Well, for discussion.
Yeah.
Does this background check, because I didn't read it all, does that include board members?
So, it does not include board members. And it's interesting, that question, I believe, came up last time, or not last time, or some time ago, I remember somebody asking that question. Because you're not necessarily working in the school, so it has not been something that has included board members. You're not really a vol, if you were volunteering in the school, then we probably should consider you then as a volunteer, not as a board member to do that. But that has not been the practice.
But we have access to the school. I mean, we can come in, we can walk around.
Well, you should not be doing that by yourself, you know, in terms of, it's not like you have free access to the school. In terms, you would always be accompanied by somebody. You wouldn't be alone with children. And I feel like I got a legal opinion on this at some point, that I would like to, I'll go back and look, because some of it is, and maybe the question that I'm remembering is actually, you know, whether or not somebody has to pass it in order to run. I'm trying to remember what the question was that I had long ago. So let me look into that, and I will get back to you on that.
Because I know I've come in and even walking down the corridor, you know, say it's recess and kids are walking around, but I'm walking, you know, I'm walking through. Even to go to the principal's office, you know, I still have access in the school, I'm let in.
But you shouldn't be alone, is, I guess, you know, that's, you know, part of, part of it is, if somebody's going to be alone with children, there's that piece.
There is, but I'm just walking down the corridor, and...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Many kids, and doors are open, and other teachers work, walking with the students, especially the younger ones.
And surveillance cameras.
And surveillance cameras.
I will also connect with Barrett Christina at the New Hampshire School Boards Association and ask about that, because it is, it's an interesting question, and I'm sure it's come up in other places. And it is an interesting thing in terms of, the only person who sees the criminal record check is the superintendent. That could be a very awkward, that's an awkward position in terms of, I don't know, it's just an interesting dynamic.
I've had so many background checks, I mean, it's, you know...
It's, I will, I'll do a little research.
All right. Any other comments or discussion on it? All right, shall we vote on it?
Sure.
All right, all in favor of the first reading of this policy?
Abstaining.
You're abstaining, okay. All right, and Policy IKE, Promotion, Non-Promotion.
I'll make a motion, okay. Thank you.
Steve?
Second.
Second, thank you. Any discussion on this one? All in favor? Three, zero. All right, and Policy JH, Attendance, True or C?
This is the first reading. I'll make a motion.
Okay. Can I second that? Can I second?
You can second.
Okay, I'll second.
There you go, yeah.
And mix it up a little.
Yeah, right. Let's kind of keep it right. Any discussion on this one? All in favor? Three, zero. All right. Old Business, the Memorandum of Understanding with the Town of Ashland Department of Public Works.
So I tried to incorporate the feedback from the last meeting. So basically, the by the school district and by the town, I tried to make them parallel, so they were saying the same indications, they had the same things that were requiring. I think one of the things was the CDL, and so I did try to rework A, so that it was a little more open in terms of it doesn't require specialized, then we wouldn't certainly need people to have that. So I think at this stage, if the board is in favor of those adjustments, then I can go back to the town and say, "Here's, you know, what we did adjust." I did share it with them, with the town manager, but it will be helpful to know that this is in line with what the board was hoping.
All right, let's up the motion, Steve. Okay. I'll second. All in favor? Three, zero. All right, thank you. Thank you. And the 2020-2021 Budget and Draft One Articles.
It's hard to believe. We did do some revisions to the Warren Articles. So typically, the school board will vote on the budget and the Warren Articles after the SAU public hearing, which is scheduled for December 17th here in Ashland, at 6 o'clock. We do have three school board members who will be up for hopefully reelection. Not you, Sandra. I just, my gaze went that way. Article Two, I did, Chair Dion did give some feedback, and I do have a request into the attorney with some updated language, trying to see if there's a way, if people were to vote to approve a three-year term, if there was a way to stagger it. So like, the first year, one position would be one year, the other position would be two, and the third would be three, and then every year thereafter, they would be three years. And, you know, one of the conversations with Mr. Dion was that, you know, it's just, it's, you know, a year goes pretty quickly in some of these positions, and it would be nice if we were able to have people, you know, kind of committed for their three-year term. And then, the Article Four is basically, you know, that's been kind of the standard article relative to the operating budget and the default budget. And those values would get filled in once officially voted on after the public hearing for the SAU Board. Article Five, you know, this is based on some conversations that, in terms of the budget process. So this would be $100,000 for the gymnasium heating system, $75,000 raised by taxes, and $25,000 to be funded if available through unreserved fund balance. And then Article Six, we have used this article in the past, which is to raise and appropriate $35,000 for the Special Education Trust Fund, with up to $15,000 coming from unreserved fund balance. And I can share with you that the, let's see, the Special Education Balance is $158,223, and the school's safety and security is $247,406 at this time. And, you know, I do just want to point out for the Special Education, although that seems, you know, significant, $158,000, you know, it is one of those things, if we were to have a very high-needs situation, student-eating, one-to-one nursing, so, you know, as an example, you know, that can really get very costly very quickly, so just something to keep in mind. I don't know if that was obviously very quick on the Warren Articles. Are there any questions or thoughts?
And so the plan would be, Article Five would be to do the boiler system next summer?
Yes, yes, for the gymnasium.
And the boiler system in there is, what, 30 years old?
Shannon, is that correct? I know, you know, part of our concern is that plumbing and all, like, it's just, we have had two incidents with water damage to the floor, and it has, okay, it's not a short one, three, that knowing that we have an old heating system in there with, you know, potential issues, it would be a healthy thing to get that underwound. And don't need to vote on them this evening, it's really for discussion tonight.
Anything else on the Warren Articles? Any other questions? All right, Privilege of the Floor, number two? No?
Sorry, I do have also some updated for the revenue for 2021, so this is part of that budget process as well. Let's see. So this is just updated with the new revenue for anticipation for adequate education grants. So if you look on the right-hand side, you will see $703,457, so that's been updated to reflect the change from the kindergarten to, or kindergarten aid, to the adequacy grant. And so that's an additional $87,858 that we became aware of about November 15th. So that helps in terms of predicting estimated revenues for the 2021 year. And the number, the district apportionment of $3,755,755,410 is presently where the budget proposal is that the board supported that evening. is presently where the budget proposal is that the board supported that evening during the budget work session. And I didn't know if you also wanted to, I did share a memo regarding the conversation about a truck relative to the budget. So I didn't know if the board had any direction or thoughts on how you would like to proceed on that conversation. I know that it was kind of left at the last meeting just in terms of some additional information for the board.
I'm wondering how the MOU with the town is going to impact that. And I've read the questions or the thoughts that you had on that too and I think those are things we need to look at. And I would like more of the board members here before, speaking from my own point of view.
It's a good idea. Yeah, I think the document, it would be good to have everyone weigh in. I've already kind of weighed in that I'm not so inclined to want to purchase a truck to possibly explore some of those other alternatives that were presented on the document that came in, it's in an attachment. So hopefully, we can get others to weigh in as well.
So we can certainly put that on the agenda for January.
All right, that's it?
That's it?
Okay. And so, privilege of the floor, still. Okay. Announcements, Tuesday, December 17th, SAU Two Board Special Meeting here at the element, at the cafeteria. And following that, we will have our chief meeting.
Yes. To be, I want to make sure, did we put that on the announcements? That immediately following on the 17th? So typically, that's when you have voted on the budget. So we should, we'll need to post that on the 17th.
Right. And the meeting for the SAU Two Board meeting is at 6:00? Is that the third Tuesday?
It is.
It is, okay. Monday, December 23rd, Presentation to the Budget Committee, time and location to be determined.
And we will get that out once we know. Do you know the time, Sandra?
6:00.
Oh, it is 6:00, okay.
Okay.
My apologies.
That's all right.
And it is here, right?
Yes. Okay, and Tuesday, January 7th, 2020, the regular Ashland School Board meeting here in the Media Center, Policy Review will be at 5:45 and the School Board meeting will be at 6:30.
And I don't know that we had it at the time. January 6th is also the public hearing the Budget Committee will host on the budget. And I, do you have the time, is that 6:00?
Six.
And I'm assuming here. Is that cafeteria here or? It's generally in the cafeteria, I think. So we'll go, can we say cafeteria then, I guess, Shannon? And this is the one that we have with the Ashland Budget Committee. It's a public hearing on the budget.
I just said 6:00 P.M. All right. And so we do not need a non-public, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Steve? Sandra, second, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you.